Of the committee membership with us. And so my chairman's report. This will be a little bit unusual just because of the transition that we're into, of course, with new board members that will be joining on December 10th. And by the time our next meeting of Finance Committee comes around on December 22nd, there's a chance that I will either still be the chair or there may be a new chair for the committee, depending on whatever the choices the board are on our December 10th meeting. So the other thing to keep in mind is that the, there will be, one of the December meetings will, the board will be discussing what would be the path forward in terms of repopulating the committees after their two-year tenure. But that would not probably be happening until the January timeframe. The, what I would ask, of course, is that any members who can and want to be able to continue their support in the Finance Committee to please pass that information on to myself, certainly, and so we can understand, hopefully, all of you will feel like you would like to continue making a contribution to the committee because I think that overall it's been extraordinarily effective and very helpful to the board and to the staff also. And to that, I really want to thank you for this service over the last two years because I do think that there have been any number of contributions in ways in which finance kind of has its tentacles in a lot of different elements of the district's business that this, this committee's been very supportive and very effective in being able to bring structure and stability to the way that we look at our finances, along with, of course, contributions that Ms. Duffield's made to bring information to us and to make us aware of things, too. So, thank you all very much. This is my opportunity to say that to you, and I just wanted to be able to do that. So, thank you. We'll move on to any of the ad hoc committee reports. Is there any ad hoc committee report from either Duane or Ted relative to the SST data?
I don't have anything. Like, see, the board, not the board, but the staff has, you know, filed the papers with the different agencies in Sacramento. I do presume, and we have not had a report back from them as to, you know, they're still gathering information, I guess. So, right now, we are in the wait and see what, what the people that we've, we've filed applications for the loans to be. I would like to say that the work that Ted did on the projection was outstanding. It really shows exactly what you can do with a 10-year loan at 1.4 over a period of time. And I think that that was most helpful, I think. So, thank you, Ted.
Ms. Duffield?
I would just, good morning, everyone. I would just like to mimic what Duane said, is Ted did do an outstanding job, and we as staff for the CCSD want to thank him and appreciate his effort. We're still working through those projections with PG&E. I just had a meeting with them yesterday, and then their meeting with staff, either yesterday afternoon or today, to refine some of the savings that we hope to recognize in energy and in operations and maintenance as a result of these projects. So, we are still actively working on the financial projections. They have not been put out to RFP as of this point. But thank you, Ted. It was an amazing start.
I'll just say that, to the extent you need any mechanical help with, you know, just filling out the information, because it was more or less a shell that had, had some data in it that needed, needed other. So, to the extent you need mechanical help, I am available. Would be happy to help out.
We said we're going to sign you up and put you on the payroll.
Hey, you know, it's, it'll be worth every penny.
Okay. And Ted, was there anything additionally you wanted to add as far as the?
Well, I'll just say that I'm assuming part of the reason we haven't had a meeting with the ad hoc Finance and RNI Committee is that with the election, we have a whole bunch of potential Brown Act violation issues if we, if we were to get together. And so, I'll look forward to having things settle out so that we can reconvene and get a meaningful update on where we stand.
Yeah, that's particularly, that, that is the case particularly as it relates to the RNI Committee because of, of course, there are at least two members on that from the community which will be taking board positions in December. So, that has complicated the communication lines for a short period with the Brown Act requirements. So, I agree with you. Look forward to having that, get back to the point of exchange of information and communication. Okay, I don't believe we have any other ad hoc committees that would require reporting unless someone, you know, joggles my memory that, that we need something else to address. Okay, seeing none, then I will move to public comment. And of course, public comment is for those items which are not on the agenda. And I see that, I see that the participants that we have, not surprisingly, our, our Harry Farmer and Karen Dean probably is an orientation for some of the things we'll be discussing today. And I haven't gotten an indication that either of them wanted to provide public comment as far as the screen's concerned. So, that, we'll leave that and move on to the consent agenda. And this is the consideration and approval of the October 27, 2020 regular meeting minutes. So, I'll ask first if anyone has changes, additions, revisions. Ted, your question?
I just wanted to move to adopt them as written.
All right, go here, second.
I'll say.
Okay. So, Ted moves, Mary seconds, and we'll take it to a screen vote by hands, please, for acceptance. Okay, and we have a five-zero on that, please. Thank you. Regular business. First, we have the item of receive an update on the fiscal year 2018-19 audit. And that's something that Ms. Duffield will provide for us. Ms. Duffield?
Sure. So, we are progressing with the audit. We are down to the last review that the auditor will be doing before he begins to engage in writing the financials. So, over this week, he's going to be double checking, you know, all the testing he did, looking at all the journal entries that we've done to date, and just making an overall review of everything that he's, you know, their team has looked at, and look one more time over the trial balance. And hopefully, he won't have any other questions, and we'll be able to move forward to writing the financials. And we have spent some extra time over the last couple of weeks researching some, well, we call, I don't want to say CIP, because that'll confuse it with capital improvement projects, but it is construction in progress. So, or assets under construction, I guess you could call it. So, we've been looking at some of those old projects that are still considered under construction, and we've been having to make a status determination if they're completed or if they're still ongoing. So, we've spent some time looking at all the different funds to analyze that data, and I think we're at a good point now where we can move forward. And hopefully, by this time next week, they actually will be drafting the financials. So, more to come. As I get in more information and have a better date of when they, the draft might be available, I will reach out to Chairperson Seidel. And we can have a special meeting if needed, or, you know, we'll figure out the timing on, on what we need to do to get your committee to review that before it goes to the board. So, hopefully, we'll have some news here in the next couple of weeks. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Ms. Duffield. Ted?
There, I'm unmuted. Okay, so, obviously, this is taking longer than anticipated, and I guess those construction issues become, you know, one of the obstacles to getting it finished. Are there, are there any other skeletons that are hanging around that, you know, once we, once we get done with this audit, I assume we'll be moving into the 2019-20 audit pretty briskly and with, with luck be done before the end of the fiscal year so that someday you could get out of the auditing business.
Maybe.
You know, it just seems, seems like, you know, there's been one obstacle and then another, and then another, and then another. And do you think everything's been found at this point?
I think so. I think it's been a good exercise to have Moss Levy as our auditor, you know, because I think they're asking all the questions that have, should have been asked historically that maybe haven't been asked. So, I'm, I'm extremely pleased with their electronic capabilities, all the research that they did on the district on their own, even before they came on site. I mean, they watched our board meetings, they reviewed the minutes for the last, you know, during the fiscal year period that they were auditing. Excuse me. So, you know, there are so many things that they did, you know, and were prepared when they showed up on site. I mean, it's, it's just refreshing, I guess, for me to know that they're, you know, committed to, to making that effort and not just expecting a piece of paper when they show up, you know, in, in our office. So, I think they've been great. I know we've had some stumbling blocks, and they've asked some questions that, you know, were research projects for me, but, you know, it's things that we need to address and, you know, decide how we're moving forward and then move forward. So, I think it's been really good. So, hopefully, all the skeletons are now gone. All that old stuff that we have to look at and unearth is moving on.
Can I ask a question? Pam, once the audit is complete, will it be posted? Will you post to Transparent California?
Yes, so, correct. So, once the audit is complete, and that means that the board has to receive it, it is posted on our website. And then I have a whole distribution list of agencies that I have to provide either an electronic link to, or the, you know, a link, some of them want a link, some of them want an actual PDF mailed, emailed to them, or I have to provide a paper copy.
Okay, Ted?
Yeah, one, one more question. Is, is this audit at this point in the way of proceeding with the financing applications?
So, not that I'm aware of. So, yesterday, I had that conversation with the PG&E team, and their opinion was, you know, because it's not USDA, if we were financing with USDA, they would want to see our audit, or if different types of agencies, maybe the state, if we're trying to get a state revolving fund loan. So, my understanding is that if it goes to a private financing, it might not be such a hangup as it could be for another type of agency. But, you know, time will tell. You know, if they want to see our audit when all this goes out and is published as an RFP, hopefully, we'll be at a point where we might have a draft to provide them.
Are there any other questions that Ms. Duffield can answer for the committee? All right, seeing none, then I will, again, another action for Ms. Duffield to be able to address for us is receiving an update on the Tyler N. Code.
Sure. So, this last month, the month of November, we have been working with Tyler to develop our general ledger. So, each week, we have met, we being Director Howell, who's part of the ad hoc committee, and I have met with our lead at Tyler for the general ledger process. And we've been working through how we set the general ledger up, how we define groupings for reporting. So, it's been a very interesting process on the general ledger side. I have some homework to do over this holiday week to help define those groupings. So, that'll be quite a little exercise to get done because we're supposed to talk about it again a week from today. And then on the utility billing side, we were successful in pulling our utility billing data during billing.
Wonderful.
That just happened. So, that has been in the works for three billing cycles now, and we just had delay after delay, or the consultant didn't have power. I mean, we just had all these weird hurdles that we had to keep, you know, going through. But we actually did the data poll. I think it was on November 4th to 5th, or 5th to 6th. So, it was very good, and Tyler is digesting all that data. Their implementation team is reviewing all that data. And the next we're trying to do is do a data poll on the financial side. So, they want to poll all the vendor history that sits into, that sits in the system currently. And then they're also going to be pulling different types of transactions in the payroll module. So, there will be, you know, another data poll probably in the next two weeks, I would guess, would be the timing. And we have to do part of it prior to an active payroll. And then the rest of it will have to be, you know, done via, when the payroll is actually happening. So, you know, there's some, you know, they want to look at the different screens and the different things so they can make sure when we migrate the old data into their system that they're aligning the same types of accounts and processes that, you know, coming into Tyler so we don't have bad data in during the transition. So, we'll be working with that, and that'll be the first real, you know, hurdle we have in the financials. We've been doing a lot of focus in utility billing, but we haven't really, you know, embarked into the financials at this point. So, that'll, that'll be a new little twist to the system for us. So, some more data we're gathering. But it's exciting. It's, it's getting close right now, the schedule, providing all the stars in line. And the schedule for the financials going online would be sometime March to April. And then the schedule for utility billing is sometime, we're hoping that the, I think it's the March-April billing that would occur, the beginning of May, that that would happen in the new system. So, fingers crossed, we do all this before the fiscal year ends, and we're not implementing right at fiscal year end, fiscal year beginning. So, so we're moving along. It's getting scary, and it's getting closer, and we just wonder how we're all going to have time to do all this, but we're going to make it happen.
Well, I have to, I have to commend you and everyone involved in the process and the care and feeding of getting it to the point that it is right now. And I, I think there's an extraordinary effort that's gone into, to get it to this point, and I appreciate your positive attitude and commitment to getting it there and, and getting it in place and operating. It sounds like the pull that you did initially for testing out the, the billing process was successful with very little or no hiccups associated with it, though, huh?
That's correct. So, Jim Britt, our consultant, he started the, he started the process around 4:00 PM on a Thursday, and then worked basically through the night to pull all the data, sent it to Tyler around nine o'clock the following morning, and Tyler's team reviewed it and decided that they had the data that they needed, that everything was correct, and they had everything they needed. We finished billing, you know, we, which means, you know, we updated the, the process to update everything. We sent everything to the printers and made sure they got the file properly and all that. And then Mr. Britt came in again after it was done, and he had about another hour and a half or so of reports that he continued to pull after billing was updated. So, so it was quite a process.
Well, I, it isn't often that you, you hear that things had moved so slowly, so, well, in such a positive manner without a lot of hiccups happening when you're making that kind of transition. So, yeah.
That's awesome to everybody.
Yeah. Well, and he's amazing. He knows, apparently, he knows the MOM system really, really, really well, so.
Well, that's probably a big benefit for.
His expertise to be able to do that. Yeah, there's not many consultants that we were given the opportunity to work with that have that expertise that he has. So, it, it worked out really good. So, hopefully, we have the same success with the financials here.
You're here. Questions? Ted?
Will you be able to take the work that you've done with the construction projects and move that into Tyler? And, you know, are you maintaining the data so that, so that you would be able to do that? And, you know, how, how's that going to work? Because I think that'll be a big step forward for the, for the district if you can have that information in your ledger system.
So, all of that will come forward. We're going to gain a lot of efficiencies in the fixed asset module as a whole, because Tyler's system, you can track it from the beginning. When it's in progress, we can track it as a project, and the system will actually do all the work, capitalize it, and start the depreciation schedule through the system. It won't be a manual Excel worksheet, you know, in the journal entry process like we currently do through our current system. So, that will be part of the financial process that we go through on the financial side is working on the fixed asset schedule. They haven't provided the template yet that I'll need to populate with our existing fixed assets. So, you know, migrating our existing spreadsheet into their system, and then also anything that's under construction currently, you know, we'll have to make sure that aligns, you know, the implementation of the general ledger. And those are all individual account numbers that sit out there right now. We have a general ledger account number for every project under construction. So, at least they'll be easy to identify the group that should migrate over for that particular project. We haven't gotten there yet, but it will, we will get there.
Great.
Any other questions that anyone may have from Ms. Duffield? Okay, thank you, Pam. Appreciate that very much for both of the reports you provided to us today. And of course, any, any kind of feedback that you can provide on the next regular business item that we'll be moving to would be appreciated, too. In fact, there may be some questions relative to Tyler in that regard as far as, you know, segregation of information or establishments of accounts and those kinds of things. So, if there is no additional information people need to gather regarding the item B, okay, we'll move on to regular business item C, which is the discussion regarding the district's reserves. And the, the intent, at least from my perspective, of putting this on for discussion item today was the, the idea of defining the, the segregation or the definition of designated reserves. We currently have some in that regard, one of which, of course, would be the monies that have been identified relative to the brine disposal that are part of the wastewater. But in, in general context, we have reserves that we probably would benefit from by having very definitive things associated with them. Some of them are within the, in the general ledger accounts, for instance, where it's the old concept of, you know, if you own a home, you save money for a new roof, or you save money for a fence. Those, those same concepts related to the idea of having a reserves or set asides for things like vehicle requirements, especially when you're thinking downline in terms of numbers of years for things for costs in the fire department or area and so forth. So, I'd just like to have a general conversation about reserves and about the areas where, you know, implementing dead, some dedicated reserves would be of value. And any kind of feedback from anyone is appreciated. And Ms. Duffield, if you have things you'd like to contribute to that conversation, too, please do so, especially if there are things that would be of value to start being aware of that Tyler is going to be able to provide to us. Ted?
Well, I guess, you know, the whole conversation starts in a way with the audit. We, we've been running with the budget worksheets now for, for a couple of years where there's no, there's no carryforward from prior year to, to current year in, in those, both reserves and inter-fund loans. And so, you know, I guess my, my first question would be whether these things will start becoming visible once, once the audit is complete for the 2019-20 year. And I think in the past, you've said that they, that it would be, Pam, but I'm just curious to, to know whether that's still the, the expectation.
That's correct. The, what we've done to mitigate that for the time being is we provided that overall reserve worksheet. We don't have it, you know, specifically in each one of the budget pages. You know, it's kind of hard. You know, it's kind of hard to do that with the general fund because there's so many departments. So you know, where do you really memorialize the carry forward balance? You know, we'd probably memorialize it in admin, but then that just creates that whole nother layer of frustration with some of the members on the board is memorializing those kinds of non-departmental things in admins. So you know, that'll be a little bit of a challenge for us. Uh, we, Director Howell and I had that conversation with the Tyler folks. You know, when we started talking about the general ledger, you know, how we handle non-departmental, you know? And so they're kind of um, we were specifically talking about the budget module, but that general ledger conversation kind of migrated over to the budget module. And it is the same uh, project the budget that helped us with, is helping us with the general ledger. So it was kind of a good conversation to start so that she's aware of, you know, some of our challenges. So um, yeah, we're, we're still trying to move that way and figure out how it's all going to uh, migrate into Tyler and what our reporting is going to look like. I'm hoping we'll be able to roll up the general fund somehow. But again, I, I'm not sure, you know, what that's going to look like at this point.
So then uh, you know, another, another question, this is a completely different direction would be um, for a department like the wastewater department, for instance, would we expect to see reserves established at the same time we have an inter fund loan that's outstanding?
Yeah, it should be all encompassing. Cause they, you know, if they have an inter fund loan and, and we show that on the reserve worksheet that we do right now, what their outstanding inter fund loan is. And the wastewater currently doesn't have any reserves. You know, anything they had at the end of 1920, if you recall that they rebudgeted for use in 2021. They're using every bit of it. So they have, at the end of 2021, they're projected to have zero in reserves.
So that, that means then going back to where, where you were starting Cindy, I think that um, having specifically identified reserves might be something that we could do in the general fund. But would potentially be more difficult in the enterprise funds. Because, because the uh, you know, sort of building up a cash hoard at the same time that there's, that there's a loan, loan outstanding to the general fund may, may cause a little bit of difficulty in terms of how, how you budget the uh, activities going forward.
Yeah. So if you think of the CIP list that we've still been working through, um, the, in the enterprise funds, there was a provision in the CIP list to put aside like a vehicle replacement fund. You know, or some, you know, there's a couple different annual type reserves that the desire is to put those reserves away. But at this point in time, thus far, there's not been the capacity of revenues available to do such. So you know, it is left there on the CIP sheet so that nobody overlooks that. But having the ability to recognize those and put those reserves aside, we just have not had the capacity to do that at this point.
No, and I agree that keeping it visible in that way helps with the future planning and keeps us focused to the need for reserve developments in, in certain places. And um, I think, I, I agree that our ability to do some of these kinds of things right now isn't something that will happen immediately. But I wanted to have the conversation just so that we weren't being reactive to a situation when we were in a position to be able to do something that there had been some kind of, you know, sorting process associated with it or some general context of what we would want to do in the, in the way of reserves. Marvin?
Yeah. To kind of expand on your example of, yeah, we know we need to be saving money for a new roof. So uh, specific reserves uh, for new vehicle or whatever. But my thought about reserves is also, don't we need to have kind of a, a, a general reserve for, if a furnace goes out and then uh, we need to have some money there for um, unplanned events as well. So kind of two different types of reserves, if you will.
Agreed. And so, and for the most part, that's uh, been recite, well, of course, would be residing in the general, the general fund so far. Which kind of talks to, you know, where we are with a general fund balance needs to take a whole lot of different things into consideration. Possible unplanned events too. Are there any other pieces of information that uh, people would like to provide or questions to ask? Or any contributions to the conversation?
I just have one more point to make.
Please.
So I also think the general fund, you know, there's been a lot of scrutiny over the last six months or so because the general fund balance keeps growing. And that reserve balance, you know, is in the, you know, high 300s or high three millions, I guess I should say, not 300s. Um, but we also have to keep in the back of our mind that the water fund and the wastewater fund don't have any reserves per se if something catastrophic were to happen. You know, each of those funds should have, you know, a six month operation or whatever. You know, the district thinks is prudent. Each one of those funds should have that sitting in reserves in case something catastrophic happened. And because they don't, that responsibility then becomes the general fund's responsibility. So you know, as we think about reserves and spending some of those reserves, I think we need to also remember, you know, for the district as a whole, we need to make sure that we're not spending the reserves down to a level where we couldn't accommodate some sort of um, emergency or disaster that would happen in the district. You know, a million dollars goes by really fast if you have a disaster. You know, it'll, it'll go by really, really fast if something were to happen catastrophic in wastewater or water. So we just have to kind of keep that in the back of our mind as well. Until those, just those funds, those enterprise funds are solvent and they would have their own reserve established for emergency.
I think it's a point well taken Pam, and thank you. So I don't see any other indication of further conversation right now on this point. Nope. All right. So we'll move on to future agenda items. Any future agenda items that uh, anyone would like to offer, please? Ted?
The most obvious one is the uh, draft audit. When that's available and uh, yeah, I can hardly wait. Exciting reading.
Hopefully not too exciting.
Here, here. Okay. Any other items? Well, um, I would say we probably would have an ongoing uh, status on Tyler in code just because uh, within a, a month, there may be the opportunity to have some better insight to some of the conversations that have gone on with the uh, with the general ledger. And I don't see any other suggestions coming forward. Obviously we can add some things to the agenda as necessary if there were things to come to, to the forefront prior to the next board meeting or not board meeting, but the committee meeting. So um, it seems to me that we can probably then have a very quick meeting today, which is excellent. Uh, Ted?
Yeah, I'll just uh, you know, throw one thing out since uh, you have a board meeting coming up. And that is, does the board have any uh, you know, a list of things that they would like us to be tackling at this point? It would be uh, you know, I, I don't know whether it's an appropriate discussion or whether it can even make it onto the agenda. But uh, as we start looking forward to the new board, the sort of reorganization of the committees and, and refreshing our two-year terms, et cetera. It, it would be a, a good opportunity to, to get that board input.
Thank you. I agree.
I think that will happen in January.
Well, there's the review of, yeah, that's the general time.
Committees, right.
Happens. Um, I think that, you know, potentially there are things that would even um, come from some of the conversations from strategic planning. We're still trying to, you know, make sure that that goes forward uh, early uh, next year. Because there may be some focus points there that will kind of uh, fall out in terms of um, financial status thing of things in some manner or another. So that's another potential area where uh, we may get some additional directions as far as the finance committee is concerned.
Can I ask a question, please?
Certainly, Cheryl.
Um, one of the things that come March, CDM Smith and the district will go to court. And um, this could be very costly. And um, do we have any idea as to what kind of court fees and different things to put aside for this litigation?
Well, number one, any of conversations in that regard would happen in closed session. Because of any number of reasons which have been annotated previously. The other thing is, is that's a board discussion, not a committee discussion.
Well, she, Ted just mentioned for the, if there was anything the board would like to bring forward to this committee. And I didn't know if that was something.
Well, again, that would be right for board consideration. And, and if that's the case, then the board will make that decision and we'd hear something about it. But uh, again, that's generally not a committee. We're, we're not committing funds for the district. The board does.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, that being where we stand right now, uh, the, I can go ahead and uh, and call for a close on this. Before doing so, I just want to thank all of you once again for what I consider to be a very successful two years that the participants on this committee have served. Uh, covered a lot of ground, putting together and working with Ms. Duffield in terms of the new budget process that was instituted, which has been invaluable in terms of having some more visibility to the financial structures. And the I, the policy considerations for budget and for reserve, I think also have been um, highly effective in our financial processes and considerations. So thank you all very much. I hope to have the opportunity to see many of you coming back as far as this committee is concerned, because whomever is chairing it will have the benefit of very strong group people who are committed to the district. So thank you very much for your time. And with that, I will close the meeting for today. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Gobble, gobble. Okay.
Whatever it may be.
There you go. Thank you.